Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. This is City of Buckeye Council Workshop for June 1st, 2021. And our first I- businesses roll call.
Councilmember Hagistad is absent. Councilmember Goodman?
President.
Councilmember Houston?
Here.
Councilmember Guy?
Present.
Councilmember Hess is absent. Vice Mayor Yonker?
Here.
Mayor Orsborn?
President. Thank you very much. Workshop items, item 2A is review and discussion of the fiscal year 2021 and 2022 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. And we're starting off with Mr. Bill Capi.
Evening or afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Afternoon since was before you two weeks ago. And that's going to kind of hit the highlights of major changes that occurred in the budget. And I know there were some questions that were asked by various council members. So I'll try to address some of those questions also. So first of all, I start with revenues because those were the least amount of changes occurred in the revenue category. The only change that actually occurred from the last presentation was the award of the AAA grant. It increased by $44,000. So I went ahead and increased the grant portion of the budget for fiscal year 21, 22. And the other part that changed was transfers. There were some adjustments made to the airport's budget. And as a result, the general fund had to transfer an additional $252,000 in the general fund to the airport to cover that additional expenses. There was a couple, there was staffing. There was a staffing change which I'll get into on a separate slide on that part. And then there was some, it was also a, I think, part of the master plan that also incorporated.
Okay, thank you.
This slide right here shows the TPT collections. I've changed the presentation layout a little bit on this one. As you can see, there's seven, eight years of actual information. And you can just see the growth pattern over the last, over the last eight years, especially in the last two or three years, where we've seen a significant amount of growth in, in construction and in retail. So, and, and at the very bottom, you can see, I kind of gave you the, the breakdown of the various TPT collections by the various categories. Contracting, sale of a home. You can see we're budgeting $21.9 million for next year. You can see 2021 is projected, so this is where I think we're going to end the year with. You know, we could, if we have a really good June, there's a chance we could push 50 million. We'll see how that, how that ends up. But right now, I'm projecting 49, basically 49.9. But if you compare what's projected to proposed, construction activity, I'm still showing about a 4% increase over the previous year projected. And retail, I'm still showing, I'm projecting an 8.6% increase over the two years. So even though these numbers are probably a little bit less than what I would normally have projected with the widening of I-10, I'm just still not 100% sure. It's similar to pandemic, maybe not as bad as the pandemic because everything, everyone said everything was going to shut down completely. But right now, I'm still showing increases. They may be a little bit more modest than I would have typically projected. But with the unknown of the I-10 widening, I just thought I'd be a little bit more on the conservative side.
Question for you, Mr. Capi. The contracting activities, you probably have a slide getting to this and I'm jumping ahead. But we were up, I think, 25% over last year in the first two months. We have enough, or maybe it was the first three, but do we have enough data to see if that trend has continued or has that slowed?
Well, I mean, for the permitting, I do have a slide on the permitting activity. Now, the permitting activity and the sale of homes, they're, they're about nine months to 12 months lagged period of time. And that's why I'm still kind of projecting an increase because we're doing so well, still on our permitting side of the single-family homes. So right now, that trend is still positive. We're waiting for May's numbers to come out to see what that.
Okay, back at it. Do you need to stretch or anything?
I think, I've been running around, you know, so I think I'm okay right now. I got a vibration now. But to answer your question, whether permits are pulled, it's going to be a nine months, minimum probably nine months, where we'll actually see any of the TPT sales come in. This has been a great year for single-family residents, obviously. So the second half of probably next year, we'll start seeing a lot of those homes appearing on TPT collections. Now, the one thing nice about construction, that money is earmarked specifically for capital projects. So even if it's 21.9, if it comes in at 23 million, that money is earmarked set aside for CFT projects. We don't spend that money anywhere else.
And I, you flashed the, the slide that you'll get to, we'll cover it at that time. But I just want to make sure that we're understanding what might be happening related to permitting and those one-time monies, based on how hot the economy is and.
Again, especially with the, with the housing market, there's so many factors that could change that pretty quickly. You know, if there's any type of increase in the interest rates could slow it down a little bit, things like that with the economy, unemployment, you know, things like that. If everything is still robust, then this, this number right here will probably be lower. But I'm just kind of, you know, a little bit on the conservative side. Way to governmental revenues. There's just a couple parts I want to go over on this part. Again, you can see the charts on the bottom. Now, there's about eight years of actual revenues. Again, you'll, you see that there's been a positive upward trend. But unfortunately, I think some of that's going to probably just continue here going forward. The state's sales tax, still the economy's doing well. Sales tax part is not going to be the issue. What we're seeing some of that leveling off is in the state income tax. Actually took a hit this year, about $1,000,000. Our vehicle license is pretty flat this year compared to, this year being fiscal year 2021 compared to 21, 22. And then the other one is HIRF. HIRF actually went down. When we look at the actual collections, actually went down about $200,000. So we're starting to see that, you know, the, the growth or the lack of growth in the state share revenues appear to be starting for in the upcoming fiscal year. On top of that, we really don't know what's going to happen with the flat tax at this point. That's still up for discussion. I've heard that, you know, it's going to be, could be implemented and maybe cities won't, won't be held harmless. Or if they are, they're going to give you a three-year period of time to try to work it in, to try to figure it out. But that's still so much up in the air. We just really have no idea where the state income tax portion is going to end up here in next budget year or even the future years. So that's something that we'll be kind of paying attention to and see, see how that works or how that ends up. Primary assessed values, there are really no change on this. I just added a little graph on the bottom. You can see the actual revenue collections over the past few years. Steady growth, steady increases. The two lines, basically you can see how the maximum primary tax levy, the orange is color and then the gray. Basically, they're now the same. So basically, we are, our property tax levy is maxed out. So there's a 2% increase for existing homes and then any new construction, new growth will be added to that. So that's what you'll start seeing year after year will be the increase. If you see a jump more than 2%, typically it's going to be because of new construction being added to our tax rules. And with a lot of the new commercial buildings and that, you, you should start seeing, maybe not next year, but the year after, hopefully. Takes a little while, probably a year after that, actually takes about two years for them to get on the tax rules. So whenever the construction is finalized, about two years after that, you'll start seeing a lot of, probably a nice little jump in our property taxes. Here's the licensing and permitting. Again, there's six years of actuals. And projected for 21, this is what I think we're going to end the year at. You know, it depends on how we, how end the month of, how June goes. I'll start working on my monthly financial reports next week, so I'll kind of see how, how May went. But I added a couple extra little charts here. The one on the far left, you can see the single family permits issued, 37, probably 3,800 permits is what we'll probably be looking at this year, maybe a little bit more. We've also had a lot of commercial activity. I was trying to gather some more information over a period of time. And as I gather that information, I'll start incorporating it into some of my presentations. But we had a lot of commercial activity this year. You can see I was projecting, just in permitting, about 20, 20.5 billion, 20.6 million for the current fiscal year. Back that down to 18 million for a couple reasons. If you look at the previous year's trends, you can see the previous year was highest was 13, 13.6 besides this year. I guess if I saw, you know, the trend, the, the actual revenues being a lot higher over the previous years, I might have went up a little bit more. And it is a one-time revenue also. A lot of this one, or all of this revenue is used for operating related costs. So I kind of, was being a little bit, probably maybe too conservative on this side, but I was concerned because this is the revenue that we do use for operational purposes.
How much of that is projects like the Five Below or the LGE or?
Yeah, we would have to look. It's a substantial part, it is substantial. Now, the things you have to remember, we'll take that money in and then we have to also, part of the reimbursement agreement, which is that it's shown as an expenditure. So yeah, those, those numbers are reflected in here and it is a, it is a huge part of it, huge part of that increase too. So, you know, there's 30 commercial projects and I couldn't get the sizes of all of them. But again, if we have another 30 and there, we have one similar to Five Below and, and LGE and those type, yeah, you'll see these revenues. And that 18 million will be, it'll be well surpassed at 18 million. But a lot of this is, I'm looking at more, just focusing on single-family homes and just maybe a limited number of commercial projects coming in for next year.
And the, the point I was going to make about the single-family homes is we're hearing from at least one home builder. Mattamy has decided to suspend sales for two months because they simply can't keep up. So that, that's going to have a ripple effect on permits pulled, revenues, those one-time revenues coming in for construction sales tax. It's something to keep in mind when, and I like the, the conservative approach to those one-time monies for next fiscal year. Because who knows who else follows that and, and how big of an impact it has on, on everybody. Two-month stop in, in sales, if other builders catch on to that and do the exact same thing, that's a.
And, and part of the monthly financial report, this is one area that I monitor pretty closely. And I usually run projections based on what I think we're going to collect and what we actually collect. So I'll, I'll be keeping an eye on that also.
And can you provide the numbers? We don't have to go through it today, but when we talk usually about permits, we're, we're talking typically the calendar year, at least when we're telling people out in the public what we've done. And two years ago is 2,800, last year 3,400, plus or minus, and the share on track for close to four. Can you provide us that separate from this discussion that we're in?
Of course. You know, for us accountants, you know, we, we go on a, we go on a fiscal year and those calendar years really kind of mess us up a little bit. But, you know, we want them, I wish we could get them to change to us, but they just won't. So, you know, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Utility rates and fees, this is again another area where I really didn't make any, there wasn't any changes. Look at fiscal year 20, 21 budget. Right now, it looks like we're going to exceed those projections, those budgets at this point. So based on that, I went ahead and increased next year's budget. Again, there's, a lot of that is due basically just to growth and with the population and things like that. So we, we, I feel pretty, pretty confident that these numbers should be pretty, they should be pretty, pretty on target for the most part. There's nothing really, they're not really being overly aggressive. They're still being pretty much on a conservative side. Danny, I'll jump into expenditures. Do you want me, is there any questions or anything that?
Any questions from council on revenues? Bill, thanks.
So on this slide, it says expenditures by fund. So I'll just kind of hit some of the main changes. Right now, the, the budget that is set for the expenditure limitation purposes will be the $390,000, $252,469. It increased since the last presentation by $5,951,722. And, and part of that increase was that our first installment of the ARPA money came in late last week. We got our 5.2, give or take, million came in. We actually received it last, last week. Not going to be spending that money this year, the current fiscal year. That money will roll forward into next year in the general fund fund balance. As a result, we're going to receive, since we received that payment, we'll receive the second payment 12 months later. We'll be receiving that second payment in fiscal year 21, 22. So that's why I went ahead and increased our capital budget for the economic development projects by $5 million. Where it was 10 million, now it's up to 15 million for economic development. A part of, I guess a little bit still, we're still waiting on the final ruling. They call it interim final ruling. We're waiting for the final ruling to come in so we can really have a good idea what we can spend this money on. Confident that we can use it on water, wastewater type of drainage projects, you know, for economic purposes if necessary. Streets, we're still trying to see if it can be used for streets or not, if it's, if that was one of the items that, that you wanted to spend the money on. The other area is that we did add four additional staff, which I have another slide to discuss that here in a second. For approximately $510,000, what those four additional staff, the salary and benefits equaled. There was the Arizona Lottery Fund, yes, sir.
Let me back you up just a little bit. Were you saying that you're looking to see where you can put these $5 million, is that right? Whether we put it in streets or water, whatever we might want to do. You can't use that $5 million for things like salaries, things like that, is that correct?
Correct, absolutely correct.
Okay, so if you put that $5 million into my water account, can't I short my water account by $5 million in my budget? And then use that $5 million for other things or is that looked at and frowned on by the government?
Well, I mean, that's where some of the questions are. But right now, it's, but the, the money has been collected in the general fund. So what we would do is we would have to transfer that money from the general fund over to the water fund, if that's what you wanted to use the money for. And then, yes, for that, you, you could then, if you wanted to, move those, that $5 million into other categories if you wish. Is correct.
Or move it back into the general fund where you could spend it where you wanted to.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The Arizona Lottery Fund, that used to be called LTAF, you know, that one, we, we were able to increase the budget by another $203,000. So then there's about $200,000 of difference. What I did, I went through and I went and tried to update all of the salaries and benefits for new staff. And it turned out that they really didn't change very much since the last time I came before you two, two weeks ago. So, you know, we may look at it again or I may look at it again before tentative or before adoption of final to see if these numbers change dramatically. But right now, it just looks like they're between what's projected and what the actual employees are being hired for and brought in. There's not that much of a difference at this point. This slide just shows the same information, but just broken down by the various main expenditure categories. Again, I have separate slides for all the categories. Actually, I have one on contingency also that I'll just touch on very briefly. Here's salaries and benefits. This one, so what I did is I, I added a couple graphs or a couple more charts on the left-hand side. And I think the one that, what's going to kind of focus on the most is the one in the lower left. We had some discussion last time about how the breakdown of the $12.5 million, how it was broken down. So what you see on the lower left are all of the different main expenditure categories for salary and benefits. So salary wages, you can see it's 48.7 million is what's being proposed. 42.2 basically is what our revised budget for this year is. That's a $6.5 million increase. And so what that $6.5 million represents is we have 52.5 new employees that's being recommended, which equals approximately $3.3, $3.2 million of salaries. We also have $1 million that we set aside for the comp and class study. We also included a, I have $1.7 million included for a 3% COLA. And then a 3% merit increase is also built into the budget. But we did make some minor adjustments to some of the seasonal staff, which is part of, you can see the wages, other wages actually went down a little bit. But between, you know, there is the wages part-time just went up a little bit. And the other thing that we added to, actually the salary wages, for the staff that we hired in this, you know, this last half of the current fiscal year, the full salaries for them are also incorporated. But between those items, that reflects or equals a $6.5 million of salary increases. The other one is health insurance. Part of this, you know, this one is, looks a little bit high, so it's still trying to see, you know, if this number is, you know, I can account for about $3 million of the 3.5 million. Again, when we have vacancies, any new positions, we budget them at the highest premium for health insurance. Family coverage, the city's share is about $28,000 a year for that. The other part is there was a modest increase in our premium, which accounts for another $500,000, $600,000. So those items equal around $3 million, a little under $3 million.
I noticed that you have cancer insurance coverage. Does that include the new law that I believe went into effect this year for the coverage of public safety, fire? Is that included in this amount here?
I am picking my head as an answer from Nancy Wells. Bill?
So it could be double this on that insurance, we just don't know.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I think those address some of the questions or concerns you have, Mayor, from the previously. Did that answer your questions as it relates to that?
Yeah, it, that answered my questions. Any, any other on council?
So here are the staffing requests. So I broke this into two parts. So everything on the left that's in bold are the positions that were, that were being recommended, submitted and recommended. The ones on the right-hand side were submitted and not recommended. There were four positions that were added since the last council presentation. There was two in development services that were new. There is another fire prevention specialist. And then there's one on the second, next slide, for the airport manager. And so those, those have been added since the last presentation. As you can see at the bottom, we are, we're 89.5 positions requested, 52.5 were recommended. And the total estimated staffing cost, this would be salary benefits and any, you know, operational costs, any vehicles, things like that, that you would need, that equals about $7.1 million. This is the second part. Again, you can see all the different staff that were added. I did forget to note that the little dollar signs indicate that some of that is being funded by another source, either a grant, any money from, you know, Maricopa County or any money from different sources. Recreation, we'll get a lot of money just from user fees. And the, the ones on the red, there's an engineering tech and water resources and there was one under fire. Those were positions that were requested for fiscal year 21, 22, but we went ahead and moved them into our current fiscal year. So those were, those are already been added to our, our payroll at this point, or budget anyway. And then this slide right here just shows, which is a new slide that I added, just shows a breakdown by department and by fund. You can see the increases over the prior year. Now, 2021 is, is actuals. So any staff that were added in the last half of this year that were not budgeted for last year were also incorporated into.
Right, just ask one question. Since you had brought it up, the additional staff request, which was the airport manager? Okay, we'll take the airport operations from one staff member, which it was two years ago, to three total. But what three did those entail? Is that the manager, coordinator and?
Skilled maintenance, skilled maintenance worker that's out there. That, that he's currently out there now.
Okay. I don't know if, I don't know if it's all three that are necessarily needed out. And this is probably way too much detail for council, mayor and council to be into. But it, it seemed like that opportunity was for that airport coordinator position to, to roll up into a manager position. If you have the maintenance, skilled maintenance person, then you have a backfill from either issues at the airport or?
Yeah, so last year, the, the skilled maintenance, there was, I think, three, if I remember right, there was three positions that were requested. And at the end of the day, we, so here's one. And I think that here right now, I believe, I checked with Scott Lowe, but I think it is used at the airport. It could be used at HIRF, it could be used in other areas too. And not maybe just exclusively at HIRF. But right now, the way it was, how it's budgeted, it's budgeted primarily for airport.
Thank you, go, go ahead, councilman.
If you say it's budgeted for the airport, that doesn't necessarily mean he's being utilized at the airport.
Correct.
So you're saying the airport budget's paying for him, but he could be used paving a street.
Yeah, the only one that would be causing an issue, right now, the airport doesn't generate enough revenues to pay for itself as it is right now, currently. So if they're used within facilities and it's general fund supported, the only issue is if it's with HIRF, because that has a separate revenue stream. So that would be the only area. So if this person is split between facilities and out at airport, then, you know, we can, I can modify it as long as I know exactly what, where the person is working. If it's 50% airport, 50% facilities, HIRF, I can make those changes very easily. But at this point, how it's budgeted is 100% airport.
Thank you.
For that area specific, can we maybe see a little bit more detail about what the plan is for, for staffing there?
We can, we can do that. One of the, one of the challenges.
One of the challenges we have is the airport is 24/7 and the maintenance worker isn't covering that, we have one person covering that. We've had a number of requests from council over the years to look at a higher position there. We think as we're going to grow and have a definite focus on it, that there's going to be enough for both of those. Right now, we have a higher level public works director responding to the airport and we're not going to be doing that. And probably it's more appropriate to have the right staff there to do that. But we can get to that in detail, that's just an overview.
And if that manager position is maybe half-time doing the economic development portion of and then the other half, that makes sense. I just want to make sure that, because you mentioned something that's very important at the airport. We're trying to treat that as an enterprise fund and so the revenues coming in should support the recurring expenses that, not the investment that we're trying to make into it with capital improvement, but recurring expenses. So I want to be careful we don't get too far out of our ski tips, but making sure that all council understands exactly what our thought process is moving forward and has an opportunity to weigh in on that. Because if it were up to me, I think you know where I stand on the airport, but I want to be very, very careful, yeah, right? I want to be very careful that we're not overstaffing just, we just have to understand exactly where we're headed.
Okay.
Operating expenditures. This one, actually, the numbers didn't change. However, the increase of $24, almost $25 million over the previous year. I was going to try to go into some of the details, but this is a category though, that there's a lot of accounts. I tried to add a little bit of a, a little graph at the bottom or a chart at the bottom. Operating expenditures, we break them into what we call different character codes. This is what we currently have set up. It's probably something we need to, I'll need to work on. Others should not be your largest category, that's for sure. So at $34 million or $36 million, so this needs to be broken down a little bit better. contractual services. The increases there are primarily, we had a $1 million that we increased in contractual services for engineering and development services. We have $1.1 million in facilities-related type of agreements, like landscaping and cleaning services, things like that would be incorporated, would be part of that. We do have $400,000 in IT's budget that we've increased and a lot of that is maintenance, software maintenance. We started utilizing more and more software and there's a cost associated with that and so is that, and then the telecom services. So that's also, those two areas have increased. Police department, there's about half a million dollars there for software maintenance programs also and contracted labor and wellness program we've incorporated. The water resources has around $800,000 increase. And a lot of that is that, in the past, we've had any of the water sewer master plans or any type of master plan used to be in capital. We are now moving a lot of those to operational costs. So you'll see this year, Alicia has a lot of, has a couple wastewater and water master plan incorporated into her budget. And then airport master plan is a half a million dollars. That's also included in the airport fund. And then the agreement with environmental services was around, increased by 300 grand over the previous year. So those changes equal around $4.5 million of the change. Again, they're spread over all different departments and funds. Yes, sir?
Let me back up a little bit, staffing requests and so on here. I'm looking at that and I'm looking at staffing by funding. And I'm looking at, most of them are shown up here. City manager, three people being added, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't see anything showing where they were requested or what types of jobs they're going to be doing?
Those are, there's two in Chris's. So Chris's is a division under city manager.
Chris, meaning?
Chris Williams.
Okay, Chris Williams.
Construction and contracting.
So that's the department?
And then, and then marketing and communication is the other division.
Okay.
It's under city manager's department.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't see where they were at and there was no category for city manager here. Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
Some of the other ones, repairs and maintenance. Again, there's a lot of just maintenance that we did not. Basically, we didn't perform, we didn't do last year. So we're going to go ahead and increasing the budget this current fiscal year for that. We also are doing meter replacements. Programming in water resources, for the $400,000 there, inspection of lines, sewer lines, water lines, things like that. Just actual, just repairs and maintenance related to the infrastructure with the utilities. Utilities actually went up like, you can see, $2 million. In the past, we used to have the purchase of water, actually as part of the capital projects fund. Basically, the purchase of water right now has been moved. And that is in $2 million is what we've increased that budget by. Anything beyond that, I'd have to defer to Alicia to answer those questions. And then the other one is other. Other shows a $15 million increase. Again, this is kind of a catch-all type of budget. So the big items in this is that we have about $4.5 million of reimbursement agreements. That's an increase over the prior year. We also have impact fee reimbursements of $6 million in the current year. Last year, I significantly under-budgeted. It should have been close to $8 million, I budgeted $2 million. But now it's being reflected in the current year as a huge increase. If you look at the actual expenditures, you'll see the amount of budgeting this year is pretty much reflective of what's being reimbursed. A couple other items, we've increased the fire grants. Not for any specific purpose, but just increasing in advance that they do get something. At least we have the money appropriated so that we can go ahead and spend it. Of all our small items, we have some $600,000 for IT's life cycle program. Again, that was budgeted in capital last year. These items are minor costs, under $5,000. So those items were moved into operational budget. So that kind of accounts for other category, it's around $10, $11 million worth of changes over the prior year. Definitely can get into a lot more detail, but I'm not sure that council wants to hear too much more detail than that.
No, I think, I think the other thing we need to keep in mind is you stole all of Chris's time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got one, I think, two more.
He's giving you the stink eye back there, so.
And I want to make sure he gets plenty of time to talk too, so I.
We do too. Thank you.
There's a couple. This one is really, for the most part, is the one that I just wanted to kind of talk about real briefly. And the part is that we increased the capital budget by $5 million, which I've already mentioned. But in the lower left, the funding sources for the capital projects. You can see that right now, either between using our TPT for construction, this is construction only, and the general fund fund balance, we're going to use $78 million to fund the CIP projects or different type of capital expenditures. Water and wastewater reserves, $35 million. So we're using our current unbalanced, our current resources to pay for capital projects.
And I, I'm sorry, I told you to hurry up and then I'm going to ask questions. The water wastewater reserves and some of those projects, I think that council had in mind for either seeding economic development or the water line at the airport, for instance. I think the intent was to take those one-time monies from construction sales tax, the overage that we had in that, and use those funds to pay for, for instance, is the water line at the airport. And what I don't want to have happen is that come out of the water and wastewater fund and then eventually later on, that become a reason that either we're raising fees or there's additional cost in the water fund due to us asking for projects like that to be completed. So is, can we also, and maybe that's covered in the CIP or, that's an accounting function with you, but I want to make sure that we're not, we're not increasing the budget of water and wastewater and leaving those one-time funds still in the, in the general fund. I think we're expecting, like I said, that that's the, terrible term, but the play money or the house money that we have to use to pay for some of these CIP projects and that was the intent, council.
So right now, the water, the water line, $1.4 million is coming from the general fund. Whatever that balance of that project that's going to be spent in the next fiscal year. If it's $5 million, then obviously then $3.6 million will be coming from water or wastewater. So that's how it's currently set up at this point. I mean, that's, again, that's an easy change. I don't know if there's other projects other than the water line project, but that is a change that I can make very easily.
Yeah, I think, I think I want to be careful of that also, that we're not, I mean, when we're saying we're wanting to invest with some of these one-time dollars, the intention is not to go hammer the water and wastewater fund to do that. The intent is that we have one-time monies that are coming from construction sales tax and the water rate payers are not seeing any of that in the water fund.
I mean, the numbers will adjust at this point.
They'll just kind of replace it.
Be over $80 million then from the, from the general fund.
Okay.
Be about $81 million or so.
And that's, the world according to Eric, that, I mean, that, other council members may have a different take on it, but I think that's what our intent was from the council level.
Very important world.
Only in my mind.
So those, the only other part here is just the contingency. You can just see how much money is, we've set aside. Again, most of this money is money that's available, we can move very easily other than what's in the general fund, which requires council approval. Last year was $11.6 million. Again, $9.1 million of that was the AZ care money. That's why that number was so high. Now we've moved that money into basically funding one-time expenditure, one-time projects. With that, this is just the last two slides are just general fund expenditures by department. I'll put that all, answer your comments, answer questions.
Any questions on this part from council? Councilman Houston?
When departments come for their employees and they're looking for the number of employees, I understand that they're going to come out and ask for an X number of people and X number approved. My question is though, if circumstances change and different departments may have a particular need that they didn't have when they applied for this in March, April and May and something comes up in December and January, is there a procedure in place that that director can come back and apply for those other ones? Is there a procedure in place? I guess is what I'm asking.
Mayor, councilmember Houston, so we actually did that this year when directors identified some needs and we did some mid-year changes, additions. I think we have to make sure we've got it budgeted in the non-departmental reserves or the contingency. We just have that ability to take it out, but we have that built in. And so that's the process, is run a look at it. And what we did this last year, I think we're absorbing what we've hired already in mid-year and we've got some more additions and we'll see what it takes. But yes, we have a process.
Yeah, because this year is so unique as far as having to come up with something if things change. And it was a very unique budget last year compared to what happened to us later on in the year. And a lot of things changed. So, okay, there's, so if Greg or something decides that he just got a new computer system that needs more people, he can come back and say, you know, I need two more people to operate this system and he's got a fighting chance through a process that's in place.
We give Greg more hardware so he doesn't need more people, but he can make that argument.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, any others? Mr. Goodman?
Yeah, Mr. Copy, on contingency by fund, I think it's slide 15. There's some pretty dramatic swings within each of those. Can you, like, give a Reader's Digest version why?
Of course. The, I guess the ones you're looking at, well, impact fees. We did add the whole group of, our new impact fees went into effect. There's still, you know, one-year collections, this current year. Next year, we'll be collecting more money. But we don't have any projects to allocate that money against yet. Yet, we still have two, we still have another, I don't know, two different categories of impact fees that we're still trying to use up. And so all of those, there's like 25 or 26 impact fee funds. Previously, we had around 15 or so, so we've kind of almost doubled the number of impact fees. So that's all that money that's been accumulated. Then contingency, again, that's another one that, also the capital project came up. That was growth-related, that was in the IIP program. We can easily move that money into a line item to transfer that money. So that's where the increase in impact fees. One in capital projects. Last year, when we were, when we started the process, because of all the unknowns for the revenues, we took a portion of our CIP projects and said, this is what we absolutely have to do. And here's the ones that we're going to wait and see if the revenues come in. That amount of money we set aside in the contingency. But that's why you see that $18 million. So it was like $15, $16 million that we put in contingency in the CIP fund. This year, we're not doing that. So that's where that change, the difference occurred. And I think all the other ones are relatively, relatively normal.
Yes, sir, a little bit more on that, on the impact fees. And I didn't look into this far enough. The new fire station in Blue Horizon and the library and festival, is that part of this? Okay.
The Blue Horizon is for sure. I believe, I'd have to look at the notes, but I believe the North Library is also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So we are getting ready to put up the bid, out to auction the trailer factory property. It's going to be probably within a year or so, we're going to, we're going to not have a piece of that anymore. Would we need to budget in if we wanted to earmark that money to use it for a specific use? If it happens within a time or do we just, how would we function that?
Well, right now, it's not earmarked. But if it does come in, we don't even have it budgeted.
That's what I'm asking you, yeah.
If it does come in, I mean, that, right now, we can earmark it and move it into a separate fund. That's very easy to do. There's a couple ways we can make sure that money is earmarked for a specific purpose. So that's, that won't be an issue.
Okay, I was just curious on how that process works.
Yeah, we can, there's a couple different ways we can do it.
Okay, we don't need to do that now, we can do it in the future. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Oh, Councilman Eric, I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I have one question. I did not hear the response on the festival library.
The North Library is covered by impact fees.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The, the North, the CIP project for the North Library is funded by impact fees.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Williams. Sorry, Bill took all your time.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I was going-
I was going to read off all the projects again, but Bill laid up all my times. Give me one second to load this in, is this the? So I'll go, since we're short on time, I will go right to the current projects that are in the proposed CIP. As you can see, this is the first page of, talking general fund first. So the airport is by alphabetical, so the airport is first and the to, the first line you can see the, the total CIP out of the general fund is 76,692, of which 52,586 is from the general fund, 24,106 comes from other funds, that would be impact fees, grants, FAA, other funds other than the general fund. So from last week, when we talked about the projects, it is my understanding that I will stand for questions about the proposed projects or the projects that did not make the cut-in to this year's CIP or any other questions that the council may have concerning the CIP, proposed CIP budget.
So, Council, should, should we take these maybe a section at a time? So start with the airport development and then the parks and public safety and kind of eat it a little bit at a time? Is that all right with, with everybody here?
If I could also say that there was a lot of project, well, there were a few projects that were in, they were out, they were in, they were out. From what got left off of this list, they, on the proposed list was one more airport project and that was a single bank of tea hangers, 10 tea hangers each, coming out of the general fund and the estimated project cost would be $2.5 million for those 10 tea hangers.
And that's in?
There's no, that is all general fund. There is no grant funding for this tea hangers.
Is that projects that were, would that be in this first phase right here, we're talking about projects that we're anticipating funding?
Yeah, if you imagine that right underneath rotating beacon is 10 tea hangers for $2.5 million.
Okay, and the, the phase two of the water line, is that in?
It is actually in the waters, CIP, sir.
All right, Council, any, any discussion on the airport development?
Yes, I have a question on the, on the list that we see for, is it on this one? It's on the, on the back page of the full list, it's item number 88, the upgrades to the doors to the current tea hangers.
Give me one second, sir.
Yeah, it's, I know that those are real bad repair, the ones that are there currently and are problematic. What it's, what is the reason we pushed that one off? Just a dollars and cents thing?
Well, the, the projects that did not make it, sir, were really a product of funding. Having enough money to go around on each one of the areas of the city. So when it came to the airport, when we added these projects up, it was just, some projects had to go.
Would, just out of curiosity, I know that we know that there's some issues with those, would that be a CIP or would that be more of a maintenance issue if we have something that's existing? Is it really a CIP or is it more of a maintenance item?
Sure, that's a, a question that we all often ask.
Good to question.
Anytime that we have to capitalize the expenditure, it should be CIP and Bill could come up and regale you with a lot. But typically if, if it's going, if it needs to be capitalized, we'll capitalize it. There are certain projects in the operating budget that really are capitalized. For instance, vehicles, you don't see vehicles in here, but they are a capital item, so.
My worry is that there, we know that there's some issues there. If one of those was to fall on somebody's plane, we have a whole other can of worms we have to deal with. So I was just curious.
Public Works does have a, in their budget for repair and maintenance, minor repair and maintenance, this is basically a.
Major, yeah.
Rip the doors off, put new doors on that are a different type of mechanism.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, aren't we almost at that point with some of those? More about it than I do.
I don't, I don't know about that. I, I know that generally if, if there is an issue getting in, the, you let the airport staff know and between Jeff and Scott, they'll send out the crew and work wonders on the, the old doors. So I, I think, my take is probably pretty appropriate to push that off to.
Okay, I thought there was more of an issue there. Maybe it was, maybe it was overstated in the conversation that I had.
Maybe, maybe with some specific doors that, that need some love, but.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on airport? Let's go to then parks and community development, the Sundance Park Phase Two. That, the $17 million number, can you talk us through the, the numbers that we're looking at here? I, I thought we were at a, an $8 million for the pond, the, basically the work that's, that's going on with four of that coming or three to four coming from?
Mr. Mayor, you are correct. From last year's number, we obligated the two GMPs. The first GMP was for $5 million, I'm just going to round, $5 million. The second GMP was $4 million. So we have started the, after we got all the permitting and all the other stuff, we started the cuts, we're moving all the dirt right now. We're, we're going to start lining the lake, which all of that is GMP one and we're not really touching much of GMP two, the fringes of it. So those two contracts are awarded right now, that, those two GMPs are awarded. So they will continue through the new year, the new fiscal year on, on July 1st. And then we have the grant that the council approved for $3 million and we have to match that, so that's $3 million plus the $3 million from the grant. But we actually are asking for $4 million and in the hopes that the grants will actually go up. Community services is of the belief that they'll actually get more than $3 million. So we have to obligate that money. We've also coincided the park into, because we've got about $22 million for the entire park. So we've actually put the park into like five phases and we've awarded the first two phases and then this is basically phase three and phase four of the park. So that when we're done with this phase, we will have everything done with the park, with the exception of the west parking lot and the low, lower level fields. So this time next year, we're going to have one more item in there and that is to finish up what the, is in the master plan for the park. But if the council were to decide that, that money was not available for this project, we can also operate the park without having those two fields and maximize the availability of money and the timing of money so that we didn't have to write a contract for the $20 million.
Mayor, Chris, can I see if this is right? So the $5 million and the $4 million in the first two GMPs is $9 million and we're adding another $8 million, so we're, the total budget is 17 million, some of that's rolling over.
That is correct, sir.
Right.
I was trying to get to that.
That's what I heard you say, but.
I, I saw when we were talking about this, kind of prioritize the, the funding, this could be a misunderstanding on my part, is that we had awarded the five and that was essentially going to be our four and I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but that first GMP was essentially digging the hole and, and maybe lining it, putting the lake in. Then the park funding was going to be combined with, which at this point is $3 million, had to be matched, we were going to match at $3 million and the two of those combined is six or 11, we were trying to maximize dollars at that point, but it did not include additional GMP over and above that. So where I thought we were headed was the initial project, which was the lake, which at that time had really nothing around it. Phase two was engaging the state parks grant with our match and the total of those came out, I thought, to about $8 million.
Well, the, I would say you're, you're almost right, sir. Originally the, the $5 million was to do the, the cuts and to haul off all the excess dirt and to start the process of lining the lake and bringing the infrastructure to the lake. It doesn't get us a lake. It only gets us a hole in the ground with a dirt, with a dirt liner, basically. Phase two was to finish the infrastructure work, or GMP two was the council approved, was to finish the infrastructure work and start that hardscape around the, the lake and also begin the splash pad. That gets us to the, the $5 million and the $4 million that the council has already approved and we are on track right now to spend about two and a half million, maybe just say $2 million of that. So in GMP three and GMP four, the way it is broken down is that GMP three begins the construction of the pavilions, the restrooms, those items that will be from the parking lot to the pool and a hardscape around the pool. So once we, splash pad is, will be finished in three, that's correct, sir, but started in two. And so we have already obligated that, that the first two, the $9 million, so we rounded in case the, the Parks Forestry came up with a total of $4 million. So we have our $4 million, the city's $4 million and we have to appropriate the other $4 million, although they've only, they've only confirmed that we're going to get three of that, but it could go up. So we have to have that money obligated or appropriated in case it comes there. So to answer your question, it's nine plus four plus four plus four. That's the way, that's the way it works out in this number. Granted that, that, and that's just an appropriation, the, or budget in this case, if the, if the state doesn't grant us the additional $1 million, then we won't have that $1 million and it will not be, a contract will not come in front of the council including that $8 million, it will only come for $6 million then.
That, that park itself probably is almost a workshop, just to understand the.
It's complicated, sir, yes.
Yes. All right, I, I don't want to take up a bunch more time with that. Let me, let me noodle on that a bit. Any, Council, any other questions on parks and community development? One question and Councilman Haggastad brought it up, the North Library and Community Center. This budget shows 460, which is the, if I remember correctly, is the design?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And the ultimate library, I think, is contemplated at $7.5 million.
I believe you're correct, sir.
Or in that range is, and it's funded generally from impact fees?
That is my understanding, sir, yes.
Do we, do we have an idea of how many, how much in impact fees we have for that library right now?
I don't, but I know somebody who does. I'll, I'll phone a friend.
Phone a friend?
So right now, I'm going to send the report on, just looking at this afternoon. Out of the, the library, we don't have $7.5 million, that's for sure. So I'll give you the answer as soon as I get back up to my office, I have that right up there, but I'll have to look, but it's, I think maybe two and a half, three million maybe. Now we also, depending on when that phase occurs, we do have current impact fees that we are currently collecting also, that we can apply those impact fees toward it. So, and part of it, we would have to look to see, it should be 100% growth related, but we'll have to check with the IIP plan to make sure that it is, it stipulates 100% growth.
So the, the reason I ask on this one specifically, and I'm very, very much in favor of the library, the North Library and Community Center, but I want to be careful that we don't put the cart before the horse and wedge ourselves in on something that we can't afford. So if, right now I don't think, I don't think I, that we've received the land or know exactly where that land is from Pulte and, and we're going to begin a $460,000 design on a $7.5 million library that we have 3.5 maybe on the high end dollars for. And, and I'm, I'm assuming that's, that impact fee is from the beginning of time, so over the, the entire time that Pulte's been developing Festival, that they've been collecting those fees and that's where we're at right now after 14 years. So what, what I think we probably need to do is sit down and perhaps Councilmember Haggastad's involved in this, but community services and, and contracting and, and make sure that we're rightsizing that design and the location for the funds that we have up in that area before we get out, do a $460,000 design on a $7.5 million library that we don't have. And, and worse, telling the public that we're going to be building them a library and they're expecting a 750 or 7.5 million dollar library and, and we just don't have it and so we keep kicking the can down the road. I think that's going to do a lot more damage than just.
There, there is a 10-year window on that, those impact fees, so, you know, whenever you collect these. So we have to take that into consideration also.
Yeah, this is Councilmember Haggastad. This is, this, Mayor, this, this is what I'm talking about. When I'm talking about our city is a bunch of little fiefdoms or villages and is not a cohesive city. I've been talking about looking around and seeing $25 million projects over here and $30 million projects over there and $90 million projects south of I-10. And every time I talk about it, I get told, we're going to get a library up in, up in Festival. And for at least the last three years, I've been informed by Pulte and others that we have to move on those funds, on those impact fees because the, they expire, which is something that Mr. Copy just said, I believe. So I, I would like to know when Festival and Tartesso are going to get these types of projects and participate in the CIP projects that the rest of the city seems to be having such abundantly and then, and then why we are limited to impact fees on such things while other parts of the city get general funds towards those things. So I don't necessarily think we have to answer all those questions tonight, but when I talk about, are we one city? Are we really treating everybody within this city equitably amongst, amongst the, the areas? This is what I'm talking about because I, I believe these numbers for this, for this North Library have been bigger in the past and now we're down to 460 for design phase. And that was my next question, because all of that was just, you know, ranting. The question is, when is this facility actually going to get built? I've seen it on here for, for years and it's still getting design fees.
Can you answer that, sir?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Haggastad, the, we would have already been designing this. We have selected the designer, gone through all that. We have a problem with ownership of the land and taking title. We have made the decision.
We have made the decision that we are not going to award a contract for a design for a library and community center that we do not have possession of the land. We have been, the city has been working with Pulte, and that is through the Community Development Department, no, Community Development, Development Services, for the land itself. So as soon as we take ownership of that piece of land, we will award a contract for the design. If, when we're talking about construction, the design will take us, with community involvement, we anticipate the design to take us twelve months. If the budget comes back that it is seven point five million dollars, then the council will have to award the construction dollars and we can turn, turn to and award those, award that construction contract.
Is there any limitation, is there any limitation on whether or not the city can use general funds or other funds other than impact fees to finish this project?
I would have to refer to the city manager or our CFO.
Mayor, Councilman Hagistad, we can use general fund money for libraries.
And thank you, sir. The next, the next question would be, what about the expiration on the, on the impact fees? Did we make some sort of agreement with Pulte that we could continue to hang on to those funds that they previously provided, which haven't been used yet?
Mayor, Councilmember Hagistad, though, we cannot, it's state statute that we have to spend the money within ten years of it being collected. So this, for the design, we would apply the oldest money that we've collected, use the impact fees that pay for the design. And then after that goes ten year window after that.
Okay. Well, my, my understanding with Pulte was from discussions with them, that they, they would be interested in signing an agreement that would allow us to keep those funds so that we could use it. And I'm trying to figure out if we know if that's been done or if we've already lost the funds.
Bill, correct me, there's a difference between the funds that we collect, collected prior to 2014, or is it 2012?
No, I mean, they all go on a ten year window. So the only difference is prior to 2014, we have a lot more visibility how to spend it versus once we went into, the money, there's kind of three buckets of impact fees prior to 2014, 2014 to 20, and then current. So each one of those have different stipulations, after different impact fee reports that were prepared, and so they would all have to comply with those impact fees. The oldest money is very flexible, we can use that money, but it still falls under a ten year window, time to spend the money.
So who, who do I need to talk to about this to find out where, where we stand with the funds that were collected, either pre-214 or after 214, so we can analyze that ten year look back?
Mayor, Councilman Hagistad, yes, I think Bill can get you a schedule for what we've collected, when we need to spend it, and what we're projecting.
Okay.
I just want to say real quick, sorry, Patrick.
Go ahead.
I completely understand his frustration on this particular item, because our goal has always been, you know, development pays for development, and if we're collecting that and it's supposed to be spent on that, I don't know exactly why we're not moving forward and just getting it done. I mean, maybe I'm missing something within that whole conversation in there? I know that the number's not exactly jive forward, but if Patrick's saying that he can get Pulte to allow us to hold that money longer, is that something we can actually do?
It's my understanding, sir, that the ten year stipulation isn't up at Pulte, it's state statute.
Statute, that's what I'm asking, okay.
And like I said, if, if we took ownership of the piece of property for the library and community center, we would have a design, it's under design right now, but currently Pulte is holding that and we do not have ownership of the property.
Okay. We, we use the phrase, phrase often of being good stewards of public monies, and I think it would be terrible of us to let that money just sit on the table and go back to Pulte. We've got to figure this out and get it done, and before we hit that timeframe. And I really, really understand Patrick's frustration with that, and we need to get, and not, not get out to that ten years, ten years and not, to get something done is, is really kind of unacceptable in my book. So, thank you.
Councilmember Guy.
Yes, and I don't, I don't want to lose Councilman Hagistad's underlying point is that, you know, a lot of projects take place in this city, and at times, we don't even know until we've got the CIP book in front of us. And I, you know, I'm probably beating a dead horse, but we need to be involved at an earlier stage than this, because a lot of these projects are already set in stone and they'll have to move forward. Maybe we haven't given clear enough direction of what our strategic plan is or where we should be going and where the needs lie in our minds as a council.
I think that beckons back to the conversations that we've all had about really having a solid, good, long period of time to have a retreat and really dive into it and not be distracted by really anything and give it the appropriate time that it deserves, because we're, if we keep pushing the ball forward, I feel like we're going to get our backs up against the wall and we're not going to be able to do the things that we're supposed to do for lack of organization.
So is the, with that North Library and Community Center, we're working with Pulte to get the property, is there a potential of a phased approach to the Library and Community Center? So in, in the design process, we're putting the monies in for the design right now, and that design is contemplating that seven and a half million dollar project. Is, can we set it up to where it is a, sort of a phased approach to where those monies that are coming in, the, the impact fee monies, which have a ten year life on them? And I think I remember that impact fee discussion, we talked about the fact that if we don't use those funds within that ten year timeframe, we're writing reimbursement checks essentially to every single home that, that paid, and none of us want to go down that road, because then who are you paying to? Is it, is it to the current homeowner, is it to the person, I mean, it was a messy conversation at that time, but the ability to do some kind of phasing in that, if Pulte provides the land, there's probably a lot more to discuss on that, and maybe that goes along with the retreat and getting into the weeds on some of these, but...
Sir, to answer your question, it was already a phased approach. We would build the library first and the community center second. They would all get designed, the infrastructure would go in at the initial phase, and that the library would be built first before the community center was built. So they are in two separate buildings that also have the ability, they will be designed so they have the ability to be expanded.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, let's continue on with, one more question, Councilmember Goodman.
Chris, this is a follow-up to that phased approach. It's seven and a half million dollars for the total project?
Yes, sir. Both project, both buildings are seven and a half million.
So if the library was built first, is there a guess of how much that would be?
Well, let me look into my eight dollars.
I'm good with that.
The, the first building is going to be, cost per square foot's going to be a little bit higher, because we're going to have to put all the infrastructure in. We obviously won't build the parking lot, build the lines to the paths and all that stuff for the second building, but the first building has to have all the curb, gutter, sidewalks, all of that infrastructure into the site. So that's, that's going to be part of that initial package. So to answer your question, how much is a library going to cost? I can tell you, cost per square feet for a library, go from a standard library is about three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. If you want a downtown library in, you know, DC, probably going to be more like twelve hundred dollars a square foot. So it just really depends on what it is, but we're planning this one at three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. The community center's a little bit more cost per square foot, only because of what goes in that building.
Thank you. You did answer my question.
Pardon me, sir?
You did answer, you did answer my question, so...
Chris, real quick question. Isn't that same state law that you spoke about, doesn't that also have a limited amount of space for libraries that the impact fees can be used for? Wasn't there something involved that I don't remember?
There are stipulations on how we collect the money, where we collect the money from, and how big we can actually build a thing that's in the authorized.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's move to public safety. And questions from council on any of these? Here, none on to public work, civil, infrastructure? Council, questions on, on any of these?
You have a question on Miller and Baseline intersection. We're in, that's in the design phase, correct? I didn't look it up.
I'm sorry, sir.
The, the Miller and Baseline intersection, it's right next to the railroad tracks?
Yes, sir.
That one's in, that was, the money that's in there is for design phase, correct?
Currently, correct, sir. We are, we are currently in the design phase, where we've had kind of a pause while our engineer works with the railroad. They have told us that, I believe they expect a, an answer to our questions in August. So this money is designed to do two things. One is to finish the design for that, but also to buy the right of way for the intersection. So we really need railroad to answer our questions before we finish the design and then go buy the right of way. We'd hate to buy right of way that then the railroad said, no, can't do that.
Yeah, and that one, correct me if I'm wrong, that particular intersection's kind of going to be a nightmare, correct? Because of the proximity to...
That is, that is not the worst one, but it definitely is in the nightmare category, yes, sir.
With that, the, so the railroad's actually giving you a timeline of August of getting the answers back?
Initial responses, yes, sir.
Initial responses, great.
Yes, sir.
And that's something that was kind of surprising to me when I became more involved with the cities of how much power that particular group has is unbelievable, and how much they can jam us up, so good luck.
I love me some railroads, sir.
Councilman Houston.
Yeah, I dealt with railroads for twenty-five years. They're no fun. I have three questions. Watson Road, MC eighty-five to Southern, is that actually, is actually something that's in, that works right now?
Yes, sir. We have, the council approved a design concept report this fiscal year, twenty, or nineteen, twenty.
And that again, and again, you're dealing with the railroad.
We are dealing with railroad, yes, sir, and APS for the affluent line that goes to Palaverdy and BID and the gas company. We are, we are almost through our DCR phase, and so this, this year, what the idea is to finish the DCR, start the design, and then start buying some right of way that we know that we're going to have to buy. No matter what happens with the railroad, an act grade, crossing or a bridge, or however that works out, we know that there's certain right of way we have to buy to complete this project. So this year, we plan on actually going after that right of way and getting it secured this year.
Are we going to have to give up another crossing, as I heard somewhere down the line, that we might have to trade one off to get one?
That would depend on what day of the week it is and where the sun is at, but I have heard that we will have to give up one more crossing, or that we may not have to, but we are planning that we will have to give up another crossing, which brings the project for Railroad Road realignment up right now, because we, we had a, kind of a loose DCR a few years back, but this really kind of dusted that off and comes up with some solutions that doesn't involve mass eviction from a whole bunch of people in their homes to get this issue resolved.
Carrying a little bit further north, number twenty-nine, Watson Road improvements, east half from Durango and it cuts off. East half from Durango going where?
South, sir. That is Miller Road from Durango is where the shale station's at, and it's going down...
No, move over, went over to Watson Road.
Oh, Watson. Watson Road is the, from where the street lights end on Watson, going south to Lower Buckeye. That's on the...
On the east side. Okay, so you're going to plan on going there, because then it becomes county, I understand?
It is county right now, sir, but we also have to blow that road out. You know, we need to get that full length as the development comes in in that area. That, that half street improvement is city's responsibility, so that's why that, the DCR was done last year, is in the process right now. We're going to finish the DCR and buy the right of way this year and attempt to do some utility remotes also.
And one more on Watson, and that's at Broadway. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand, what is that? Because that sure doesn't include the stoplight that we're trying to get in there and the property we're going to have to purchase there and a lot of other issues you're going to have there.
This, the first year is only a design concept report, or up to a fifteen percent design with some alternatives for an interim solution. We, the north side of the intersection is the, the one that we've got an issue with. The southwest corner has already been constructed. The southeast will be constructed by a developer that's coming in, but on the north side, we don't have any development coming in. We also have Citizens Home there, and we've got a grade elevation problem on the northwest corner that, so we're looking at, in this DCR, we're going to look at a couple of different approaches to bring this intersection in, in an interim solution that doesn't affect, doesn't require us to buy so much property initially and doesn't impede the flow of traffic north and south.
I noticed in PNV that the homes that were going to be approved on that southeastern side, they do not include the corner by the intersection. They apparently purposely cut out a section and they're offering, they wanted to build the homes, but they're cutting out that section. I'm assuming that's to avoid having to pay their portion?
Well, you would have to talk to Development Services and Engineering about that, sir, but mostly those corners are going to be retail, so that sounds like a great place for a quick trip.
Very good. Thank you, Chris.
I'm sorry, should I jump in? I have a question on two items that Councilman Houston brought up. So from, on Watson, from Durango to Lower Buckeye, on the east side is where Sonora is, that's the part that we're going to go ahead and do the half street improvements on that? Is that, okay. So what's the difference between that and the half street improvements we need to do on Miller for the exact same reason? How did you pick one over the other, out of curiosity? Did you do the traffic study? Is that what's calling, bringing that up, or?
Are you saying, why is this project coming?
How do we differentiate that, is what I'm asking?
Well, both projects have been in the works for a while. There's a whole host of reasons why one project moves up, the other one doesn't move up, but to clarify your point, I don't pick any projects, I just do. So I, I believe that as Miller was the first one to go, because Miller had more influence from Durango to Lower Buckeye with the growth there, it was a year later that we started the DCR for Watson's side.
Okay. And I think you already answered my question on the other one, so, thank you.
Quick question, number twenty-two for... A quick question, number twenty-two, Verado Way, Yuma to Vamburun. Um, can you, it, does, so that intersection, first, uh, Verado and Yuma is pretty much a mess at any time of, of, um, traffic, uh, whether it's morning or, or evening, is, does this take care of the traffic issues that are east-west on Yuma?
Well, sir, um, it, it's going to help. Uh, I don't think it's going to fix all the problems because, uh, Yuma skinny down, skinnies down to a two-lane road. Um, so, uh, as Yuma were, if Yuma were to be a two-lane road or the ultimate build-out and it went through the intersection, it would help the intersection. Uh, but then as you continue to travel east on that, uh, on Yuma, you, uh, again, get to an area that has not been developed yet, so it skinnies back down to a two-lane road. Um, uh, north and south, it's, uh, it's probably going to help that most, uh, north and south, uh, but there, there's going to be relief from that because there's going to be multiple lanes, so there'll be a true lane and a dedicated right lane, dedicated left lane. So there, there will be a lot of easement, or easing in that intersection once this intersection is put in.
Yeah, um, I don't know what prompted specifically this one from, uh, Vamburun to Yuma, but all of it needs at some point to be upgraded, but, um, but we might just analyze that entire section from Yuma to Vamburun and then also, uh, the, the Yuma Road east-west and see if we're spending the money in the right location to alleviate the traffic issue.
Well, the, the real issue there, sir, is, um, on the north side, northwest side of that, uh, intersection is state land.
Yeah.
So that, that prevents us from, uh, buying, uh, the right of way that we need, um, because it's got the DoD and FAA overlay on it. Uh, so, we're not going to be able to build the permanent roadway there. Uh, also, the council's direction is that growth pays for growth, so we have that problem also of, uh, getting in and building a full street, uh, in an area that will, the developers then will come in and not have to pay for. So that becomes another issue. However, I would say that if we develop this intersection now, there'll be, uh, uh, traffic moving north-southeast-west on here that will alleviate a lot of the backups that we have right now. And this particular intersection has a big drainage problem also, so, this intersection has to be ra- risen about four, excuse me, about three feet, uh, and then we have to, uh, do a lot of, uh, flood, uh, structures in the inner, underneath the intersection and to the northwest.
Okay. Yeah, I, I understand that, I would just, even if it's not the ultimate condition, I, I would make sure that, uh, we're making best use of that seven million, um, and, and it's very much considering that east-west movement on Yuma. That, that, uh, in my experience, tends to be the backup at that intersection. I, it definitely does back up to the north, um, but there's a, there's a great deal of traffic that travels east-west.
It doesn't help the Odyssey schools there that lets out and.
Right.
Really, uh, it's a, uh, a mess in the traffic.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, the seven million dollars also, that is a, the engineer's estimate, the engineer who designed the intersection, that's their estimate. I believe that number will come in lower, but it's the engineer estimate's the only thing I have. That's why it's there.
Okay. All right, um, on to, uh, Public Works. Council questions on, on the Public Works facilities?
Just one?
Yes, sir.
When are we going to start some action on the swimming pool, on our swimming pool?
The, um, uh, swimming pool will be, uh, the design will be completed in the next three months. Uh, this money does not actually build the swimming pool, it only builds the parking lot that connects the swimming pool to the, uh, Shade Recreation Center and, and does some drainage improvements, uh, along that area. It is, consider this like the first phase of, uh, the pool expansion. The pool has a terrible time with parking and so does their recreation center, so that's why this parking lot kind of looks at the backward L, um, and then also, uh, it, we're going to redo the current parking lot at the pool. So the pool itself doesn't get built for another two years, uh, because of impact fees and timing for that also.
And how many are you going to, how much parking are you going to increase that by?
Um.
Hundred cars?
It, I believe that we have a hundred and seventy spaces, but, um.
You don't need an exact number, Chris, I just.
I have a lot of, a lot of projects in my head, so.
All right.
I believe it's a hundred and seventy, but I will project and get back to you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, council, any other questions?
Question on the, I think it's item forty-three of the A-Wing at, uh, so, correct me if I'm wrong, the four-twenty-five, eight, eight-sixty that's in the, the, this budget is going to be basically, for lack of a better term, like a Band-Aid on the roof and get that stuff, so it doesn't deteriorate any further, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir, the, but it's to repair the roof. Uh, you can't call the roof a Band-Aid. It, it is the permanent, uh, fix for the roof, and then it allows us also to go in and do the abatement, uh, the lead-based paint and asbestos abatement inside the, uh, A-Wing itself.
Okay. And, um, that's all within the four-twenty-five, correct? That's going to get, okay. So then, uh, in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we have two and a half million. Is that for complete renovation of the building? And, um, what is the, I guess more, should be more of a question to follow up later. I'd like to sit down and see what, what the actual plan is for that. Is more the, more of, I'd like to catch up and look at that at some point, rather than a question.
The, uh, the construction dollars or renovation dollars.
Yeah.
Are designed to, um, put the building back to its original, um, um, layout architecture.
Okay. I just think that, um, if the last year's proved anything to us with the, with the smaller groups and the smaller concerts and the smaller performing arts things actually being more, uh, approached by the general public, I think that we're, this is kind of a low-hanging fruit for us to get on the docket further and faster. Do you?
Well, once we do the abatement, um, uh, there's no plan in there, because it will not, we were, it is designed, that, you know, abatement, we come in and remove everything and where we have to strip it down to the, to the studs and the floors, so there's no construction dollars in any of these.
So the abatement just leaves it empty on the inside, exposed, exposed bones?
It is, it is to abate the, uh, um, facility from, uh, all lead-based paint and asbestos.
Yeah.
Then the idea is, as we move into next year, we will have the, uh, um, a better budget, uh, with the price of certain things escalating, we will redo the budget and, uh, then we'll present that for the council's consideration to, uh, begin the renovations of, uh, facility.
Great. I'm glad to see it, moving forward with at least the abatement, and I'm not real keen on leaving it open on the inside, but I understand why that would be the best course of action. I just don't want to lose an opportunity of the, to have something like the Chandler Performance Arts or, you know, Gilbert has something, even Queen Creek has, has, has something like that, and I think that we need to throw our hat in that, in that ring and get that up on its feet, because it's cheaper to do that, at that place than build something new.
Round it up to three million, I can probably get all that done by this time next year.
Take a check? You take a check?
Uh, so, I think that takes us to the end of our, our list, is that correct?
We have, uh, water and wastewater, sir?
Oh.
I just have to find out what page it's on. It is about halfway back in the mix there.
In the first tab?
Forty-six? First, uh, projects are, uh, wastewater funds, and, um, it's the, um, same division, the, um, first, uh, um, nineteen million is for the total cost of the project, and then we have, um, some, uh, WIFAD dollars and, only WIFAD dollars on, uh, the wastewater.
Okay, uh, questions from council? The airport water line for commercial parcels, what, what is the three-point-four million left?
The three-point-four, sir, is, uh, again, we are in the process of, uh, uh, finishing the first second, segment of the pipeline. Um, that, that, those dollars don't reflect in here. The, the second phase, uh, which includes also the, the upgrade of the Hopeville campus, uh, so we have to carry that money into the new, uh, fiscal year, even though the contract was awarded, uh, in this fiscal year. And then the rest of the money is, um, to do post-design services and the second phase of the pipeline, which will be coming in front of the council, uh, the first meeting in July.
Uh, so what is that, what was the first phase of that water line? What was the cost of?
Oh, um, with contingency, sir, we were not quite at one-point-one million dollars. Um, uh, we did not use very much of the contingency, we ran into one differing site condition. Um, I believe we're looking at, mm, nine-seventy, nine-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars for that pipeline.
And then the, the phase two of the pipeline, what is the cost of that?
Um, nine, um, eighteen, I believe is the number, sir.
Where does that, where does that take that water?
It goes to, uh, down the, the, from the entrance, basically, entrance, uh, west toward the, um, uh, admin building. There is a, uh, not a T, but an X, because the water line will eventually continue west, uh, there, and then it goes south all the way to, um, where the, uh, airport maintenance hangar or maintenance building will be, and then it goes north, um, almost to what we refer to as the Hans Hangar. That was, uh, when we bid, bid the work out, that was as a, um, an add alternate, and, uh, the numbers came in under budget, so it is, those to be awarded.
Well, the, the budget was initially seven-hundred-and-fifty grand to put a water line to the airport.
Well, that's true, sir, but that budget also was that water said they had a tank that they could move over there and they had a pump. Well, the tank ended up being thirty-six-thousand gallon tank, that was a bolt together that we could not get recertified and the pump didn't exist. So that original budget was a bunch of people trying to get water to the airport on a, um, let's just hurry up and get it done. This is not that. This is the first phase of getting fire flow to the airport where we build it so the water can actually run it, because Hopeville only takes about sixty-three-hundred gallons a day. And the second thing is that it meets our engineering standards, and third, that ADEQ would approve that. So some of the increases came because there was no way that water could actually operate this system unless we did certain things. The second thing is, we had to meet our design standards, and lastly, we had to convince ADEQ that we could do this. So that's where this project came from, and originally, we were not putting any pipe on the airport itself. That was, developers had to do that. That was the original scope of work.
No, sir. That was not the original scope of work. What council had asked for is for water to the commercial parcels at the airport. So I don't know where the swing and a miss was on, um, on getting water to those parcels, but phase two is supposed to be water to the actual developable parcels or where we're looking at developing, which is the T-hangers and nothing toward hands. Uh, if somebody comes in just north of that cross, then, then the idea is that, uh, either we're, we're engaging one of the JOC contractors to take it there, or, uh, or they're taking it there, but the, the idea is not to continue scope creep and continue building, so with, with this, we're going to be at four-point-five million dollars for water to the commercial parcels at the airport.
Um, with, uh, design and permits, probably, yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, we'll talk more on that later.
Right, sir.
Um, Fairlon Campus, we have seven million dollars developer contribution?
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's in the bank and ready to go?
In the bank. They don't control the bank, but.
The bank is saying no behind you there. It is, do we have that, uh, guaranteed from the developers, or what's the? I think where I'm headed with, with these questions is the, the, um, additional monies that we have, I think we, uh, we need to be careful not to spend these on things that are not going to provide an immediate return to the, to the city. So, uh, we had talked about some additional funding and, uh, sent some emails to the city manager, I think that's been shared with, with council, that I think our best move would be to take some of the funds that we have, uh, that, that are, for instance, at Sundance Park, the, I mean, that, we need to talk more about that one as well, but the, the additional, over the additional that we were, uh, talking about, the five million or, or whatever that's grown to over the, uh, eight that we were contemplating just two months ago, um, those dollars need to be put toward projects that are going to seed economic development right now. And, and the intent is to approach some of the developers and say, look, there's funding that we have that either pays for water out of these funds, not the water department, or sewer out of these funds, not out of the, the sewer department, and, uh, and begin to incentivize some of these economic development projects with, um, with monies that the city is kicking in, whether that's Perryville Road, or it's, uh, or the Fairlon Campus, or it's one of these other projects that can get off of the ground and going, so that we see this economic development happen with the city. If it's, if it's at Festival, fantastic, then we seed that money into Festival and, and we make it happen there. But the idea is to take some of this excess that we have and then invest it, so that that provides a return that starts that snowball going, uh, moving forward. So if, if there are seven million dollars worth of development, developer contributions, and we have funds, whether it's a five or ten or fifteen million dollar economic development fund, or something out of a CIP that's not providing a return, we combine those and suddenly we're building Fairlon, and then when a developer comes in and says, I want to build something in your city, we're not sending them out to find water, uh, for the city. We're the water department, we're the city, we, we do that. So the idea is to, to remove all the excuses and get down to, here's what we're going to be doing as a city, economic development-wise, uh, and, and that's, so that the questions that I'm asking are, are really related to, are we spending our money on, uh, the most appropriate thing right now, which is investing in our future, um, with a, with a more immediate return? So is the, the Fairlon Campus, the seven million dollars, do we have developers that have, that have pledged that money?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So if we went to them right now and said, we're ready to build, they would donate seven million to that?
Yes, from my understanding, talking with Alicia, um, there is a, the developer is willing to, uh, contribute to seven million dollars once the project, so the difference, you know, there's sixteen-point-one million is currently being budgeted.
Yeah.
So then the, the balance that would be coming.
Nine million.
Would be coming from the water reserves.
Or other developers that we contact that, that are ready to go in that area, uh, who would pledge up the money to, to begin that too. And then take that incremental approach to building Fairlon Campus, not, not an entire Jackie McWater Campus, but, um, uh, but something that at least gets development off the ground, economic development off the ground and, and moving.
Right, I mean, I'd, if that's, if that's possible, you know, there might be certain phases that have to be built and may. You know, there might be certain phases that have to be built that may, maybe go beyond the seven million or whatever the contribution would be.
Eric, can I just get clarification here? So what I hear you saying is in addition to whatever the ten or fifteen million, if we can cut some money out of, uh, the park money or, uh, the park or the, um, airport water line or some of these projects and get that fund built up for these kinda things? Is there some amount the council has in mind that we, we're targeting?
Well, it's, it's the, the amount that, that does what we're trying to accomplish. I don't know what that is, but that, that's a conversation with the development community who is ready to go right now. I think we've talked to the people at Perryville and if, if we build an extension of the sewer line, they have the water now solved, uh, there's a drainage issue that exists down there and we need to start playing master developer and, uh, figuring out how to put some of these projects together instead of giving the development community laundry list of, here are the things that, why this project or this location doesn't work. And I think, uh, I think Mr. Roderick's been out. I know I've had a number of phone calls and visits with developers that are ready to go, go, go. Uh, they just need either help from other developers to chip in the money to start building some of the infrastructure or, um, or the city participate. So I, I'm not saying specifically what we need to cut, I'm just saying we need to make sure that we're spending our excess dollars on the most appropriate thing right now for the city.
If I could add, sir, um, this project was obviously funded partially by the city and, and then we also have developer, uh, projects in there, our development in there also.
Referring to Fairlon?
Yes, sir. The, the, where we came up with the, the separation of what should the city, uh, um, contribute and what should the developers contribute, had to do, had to go back to when we purchased Global. That the city had certain commitments in the Fairlon area. So as we calculated what these costs would be, this would be the city's portion of that, uh, plus the oversizing for the, the campus, uh, it's the campus piping itself. But then we knew how much money was going to be coming in for, uh, Fairlon from developers. The, initially, uh, we're going to, we may round up, I have, I'm, I'm not making that decision, but it hasn't been made yet. We're gonna build from, in Fairlon, somewhere between a, uh, four MGD and a six MGD that is based upon the, uh, Jackie Mack Water Campus, the layout of Jackie Mack Water Campus. So if another developer comes in and wants to build another million gallons a day or has the requirement to build a million, another million gallons a day, then the idea is if the campus is all constructed and we've got anywhere from two to four that's built, then they could come in and they could build it. They, they don't have to wait, they don't have to give the money to us. Or they could, we would have some capacity so that they could get started right away. They could give us those dollars to get started right away, then we program it for the next phase. So maybe they only need a half of, uh, five-hundred-thousand gallons a day or the next one needs another five-hundred or a million. Then we could take those monies and then build it, uh, the larger portion and actually the, uh, cost per gallon would actually be less. Or they could come in and they could build it themselves, it's up to them. Uh, well, I mean, it's up, they're, they're, they're part of the, uh, uh, request, but it's up to the city to rather decide that's the direction they wanna go in.
So what, what we probably should do is, is, uh, maybe spend some time talking about water infrastructure at another, um, and not just related to CIP, but what our plan is, um, master plan and start working through some of the detail of that. Um, but I, uh, I know we've probably got one or two other opportunities to get into CIP. Is that correct, Mr. Klinger? I'm looking at you. It's not the last time we're talking CIP.
The, the plan is to talk again in our next council meeting, um, but that is the time for tentative adoption, the second meeting in June.
Okay.
So we've got between now and then for cleaning this up.
Okay. All right, so, uh, definitely wanna talk more on, um, uh, the park, Sundance Park and understand that, um, where I clearly missed the budget, um, from three months ago. And then the other, funny, I think was one that you were, oh, and then understand that, uh, actually, uh, Councilman Haggastad, uh, North Library and Community Center. Go through the, the detail on, on that one. We're, we're out of town time for, uh, CIP stuff. Any other quick comments or questions from council before we?
Um, I just have the two closing thoughts. One being, um, I think this, when we get into this, it, it illustrates even more how we can rabbit hole into all this and how much more we all wanna know about all of these things and the prioritization of them. And secondly, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't speak up and say something right now, Chris. Um, when you guys got to talking about the, uh, water line at the airport, tone of voice changed a little bit and you got a little bit defensive.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't defensive, sir, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me finish. And I think that, um, I do know that they can, they can become a little bit emotional with those things sometime and I did hear it in your voice and I understand maybe it wasn't there on purpose. But when we have questions for that, I don't wanna have to, we worried about being responded back to like that. So not to post you up in front of everybody, but I did hear it and I don't, I don't like that, um, being the interactions that we have with each other.
I, I guarantee you, sir.
And I think, I think the mayor is too gracious to say anything about it, but I'm not.
It's, it's just a project. Whatever the council's, uh, wishes are, it's just a project.
Okay, uh, council, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion made in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And we're adjourned and we'll start back up at six-ish.